Okay.
No, I think we're just waiting to Margaret. She should be on any minute. Let's give her a couple more minutes and we'll get started if. In a couple minutes.
We do have a quorum. It's been confirmed just now.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and get started then. This regular meeting for the town of Green Mountain Falls, Board of Trustees will come to order. The time is 7:03. Today is Tuesday, July 7th. All trustees are present except for Margaret Peterson and Chris Quinn. I believe Margaret will be on soon, but we do have a quorum. At this time, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll bring my props here. I don't have my flag holder today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda as presented? Board, do you have any, anything different on here? Saying none, I would move to approve item two on the meeting agenda.
This is Deonnie L. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 All right, so that motion passes. At this time, the board is going to recess to a brief executive session. This is pursuant to CRS 246402E for the purpose of matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing a strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators concerning El Paso Trail Road Maintenance and trail development and access issues. The board will briefly recess. If everyone wants to stay on here, we will rejoin you. It is a brief session. I don't anticipate more than 10 minutes, so we will rejoin you shortly. If I can figure out how that would be the best. All right, are we all back? All right, looks like we are. Margaret, are you hearing me all right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm assuming everyone can if you can. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we begin that, let me remind the board that everything that's discussed in executive session stays in executive session. No decisions are made, no votes are taken, and that is simply for negotiations only. Continuing forward is item four, consent agenda. Bring into record accounts payable for June 16th through July 7th. Approve the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from June 2nd. Approve the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from June 16th. Item D is the Kirkpatrick Family Fund Grant Award Acceptance, the Comprehensive Signage and Parking Plan of 35K, and the Planning Code Rewrite of 45K, and the Town Clerk Job Description of Posting on the Website. Board, do you have any one of those items you would like to bring out for discussion?
I have one correction. The planning rewrite is actually 40,000. I correctly typed that.
All right, so 40,000 on planning code rewrite. I assume that that is, a lot of that's going to be the cost of publication.
Yeah, and it's matching funds for a DOLA grant application which we put in for the remaining portion of that project. And we're still waiting to hear from DOLA as to whether or not we'll receive that, that money. The project will hopefully be able to move forward if we get that.
That'll be great, man. It's been a long time coming. Board, if there's no further discussion on that, I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda as corrected. Is there a second on that motion? Margaret's muted. Maybe everyone's muted.
I think, I think, I think some of the board members are muted. We're working on it.
That makes it hard to have votes.
Yeah. Just gonna check in real quick.
Okay, second.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Saying none, all those in favor, but by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll see where Katherine and Johnny are.
Johnny, I don't know if you can hear me now.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, good.
All right, and your vote on the consent agenda?
Aye.
And Katherine?
Aye.
All right, now we're cooking up gas. Item five is under new business, A Resolution 202012, a resolution of the town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado, ratifying an agreement and quitclaim deed between the city of Colorado Springs and the town of Green Mountain Falls. As I recall, this happened a long time ago and I'm, I just, Angie, if you could just say why that we have this on the agenda this year?
Well, it's probably technically old business, but it's, it's new business to us, I guess, or to me. And I, I should put that in old business. This started back in 1927. We gave the, some of our water, our water infrastructure over to Colorado Springs Utilities, who currently maintains and provides water service for people who live in town here. It was reratified again in 1988, 32 years ago. Unfortunately, this document was never properly filed with the county. And in 2012, we lost some of the older documents. We were able to find the 1988 document and worked with Colorado Springs Utilities to just take care of this housekeeping item. This resolution has no financial obligations for town. CSU would. CSU would pay the county filing fee, and that's, it's just like housekeeping.
As a note of interest, Matt Gutron is on tonight, and he was on the board, I think, when this was ratified in 1988. Board, do you have any further questions on this? Well, seeing none, I would move that we approve Resolution 2020-12.
All second.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 And that motion passes, De'anni, did you vote on that?
I did, yes.
All right, thank you, so I assume that was in the positive?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. The next item on the agenda is advisory board membership application. Angie, I saw the membership application. What other information do we need regarding this?
Well, I, I just wanted to thank Clay real quick for taking the time to put together his vision and his, you know, express his interest in being a part of the community and working with the board, the Parks and Rec, and with the Board for a shared community vision. And Clay is, is, I believe, online. If you did have some questions for him about his application, then we can unmute him if you'd like to ask him any questions.
All right, I did read that, and I read the work proposal, which I thought was very interesting. Board, do you have any questions for Clay?
Not at this time.
And this would join the application that's already in place by Goody Goodwin, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Well, I would move that we approve this volunteer application.
All second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 And it's on Johnny. I can see you there, so I know. All right, that motion passes. Under Old Business, 6A, which is the public hearing and final adoption of ordinance 202003, and ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Green Mountain Falls Municipal Code concerning Boards, Committees, and Commissions. This is a continuance from a meeting that we had had, in which we had had a lot of public opinion, which is great. As we head into the public, public portion, the public hearing and discussion, I just want to remind everyone that you're welcome to express your opinion. We're glad you're here, but you are going to be limited to three minutes. It's going to be held strictly to that, and here's the reason why. We discussed this with an attorney as to best practices, and the reason being, everyone gets three minutes because then there's no perception of either pro or con on behalf of the board. And the board won't respond to you at this time because if we did, it actually takes away part of your three minutes, which is unfair to you. And we want you to have your entire time. And when we close the public hearing, the board will answer what they can, or they will advise other questions to either be put on a later agenda or be sent to staff to take care of, which is the same thing we do with public input. So at this time, I will open the floor for the public hearing. This is specific to the municipal code change. If you have other items that aren't on the agenda, that's going to come later under item seven. Angie's going to go through and open for whoever has registered to speak in this public hearing, so it's your time.
So we have three people that signed up specifically for the ordinance, public comment. And in the order in which those requests came in, the first request was from Rocco Blazi. All right, if we could unmute Rocco, and if Rocco could state his name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I know you've unmuted me. I have, I have input on this ordinance, but I also have input on the ordinances to follow. So before you start the timer, I'd like clarification on comment and when it starts for each proposal.
This is specifically for the ordinance 202003, which amends the Municipal Code Concerning Boards and Committees.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just asking for clarification again before I give you my comments on this. I have comments about several things tonight, so how are you going to handle that?
This is the public hearing, so you can talk about this ordinance. The resolutions come later after the ordinance. They aren't a public hearing. But depending on, well, we'll, let's talk about the ordinance, let's stick with your three minutes from that. I don't have a public hearing, but we can have a discussion for the other two resolutions.
All right, so I understand you'll come back to me for comment on the other parts of the agenda, is that true?
I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Rocco Blazi, 10955 Belvidere Avenue. As both a planning commissioner and Trails Committee member, I oppose bringing ordinance 2020-03 concerning Boards, Committees, and Commissions to vote. As extensive changes were made and only posted last night, give your valued committee volunteers a say in what affects them, and allow all affected board and committees the chance to discuss at our regular committee meetings. There were extensive changes since the first reading in June. None of the boards or committees had access to that until last night. And we ask that you, instead of rushing this forward, you give the boards and committees a chance to discuss in session, and so that we can give you the best guidance we can, and that's why we're volunteering for you and the town. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next one we have here is Jan Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So, my name is Jan Smith, and I live at 9230 Shoshone Road in Chappeta Park. I'm here to comment on the proposal to change the structure of the Trails Committee from 11 voting members to five Green Mountain Falls residents only, and to potentially place the Trails under a new open space advisory committee. I've been a volunteer with the Trails Committee for about 10 years. I became involved because I have lived in Uptown for over 35 years, hiked many of our local trails for years, and wanted to give back to my community. As a member of the committee, I enjoy helping maintain existing trails in Green Mountain Falls in an effort to keep our neighbors and visitors safe and provide an enjoyable hiking experience. Each spring, our committee members inspect the trails and prioritize when and how to correct any deficiencies or potential safety hazards. Then we get to work. We schedule six formal volunteer workdays through summer and fall, and several informal workdays when necessary to perform immediate maintenance or repairs. Recently, I had the pleasure of inspecting and performing minor maintenance at the Wallace Reserve, and also assisting other members of the committee to improve the Catamount and Thomas Trails by blocking hiker shortcuts, removing possible hazards, improving switchbacks, pruning back overgrowth, and providing better signage to keep our hikers from getting lost. It's not only fun to work on the Trails and the committee, but rewarding to see the results of our work and hear positive feedback from the hikers. I like knowing I'm working with like-minded committee members to make a difference in our community. Our committee has functioned very well over the past 10 years with the current structure of 11 voting members, six of whom are, like me, non-residents. The Trails are a huge straw for the Town of Green Mountain Falls, and we seek to provide active constructive participation with the board to keep the Trails viable and enjoyable for years to come. I am proud to be a voting, non-resident member of the Trails Committee, and ask that you keep the existing committee structure and voting rights for 11 members rather than limiting the committee to five members who are just Green Mountain Falls residents. Since the Trails are open to everyone, I think having 11 voting members, including non-residents, helps to share the work necessary to plan and maintain the Trails at no cost to the taxpayers of Green Mountain Falls. From my perspective, many new residents moved to Green Mountain Falls for the ambiance and charm of this beautiful mountain town. And the abundance of well-maintained Trails enhances their quality of life and adds to the value of everyone's home. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next?
We have Todd Dixon. And Todd, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name is Todd Dixon. I live at 11045 Iona Avenue, and mine's real short. I was recently appointed to the Planning Commission, and I'd really like to be able to discuss this new ordinance, or this revision to the ordinance with my peers on the commission. And so what I'm asking for is that the board consider delaying a vote on this item till the Planning Commission has had a chance to discuss it and make any observations and recommendations necessary on it back to the board. And I also have comments on the, on the two resolutions, but I'll wait for those agenda items. Short and sweet.
All right, thank you. Angie said all the public hearing?
Yep, that's all I got, that's signed up specifically for the ordinance.
All right, so we will close the public hearing portion. Board, this is your time to discuss the ordinance. And I'd like to hear what your concerns and ideas are currently of ordinance 202003. It is, from most perspectives, a housekeeping issue, but of course, what it has dusted out the most is Trails, so. Katherine? I know Katherine's on here.
She is muted.
This is De'anni, I can also go until we get her background line.
All right, De'anni, why don't you go ahead?
So, I, I would just like to get a little more clarification about it being a housekeeping issue. I know that that's been said a lot. I think there's a lot of, of concern based on this ordinance potentially changing the entire structure of the Trails Committee. From looking at the municipal code and kind of hearing what, I guess, some of the concerns are, I guess my question is, when you look at the municipal code online, it doesn't specify Trails at all. And so my understanding was that the housekeeping part of it is to actually include Trails underneath our municipal code concerning it as a part of Green Mountain Falls's committee. If we approve this ordinance, that does not necessarily mean that it restructures all of Trails Committee the way it's currently operating. Is that correct, or am I, am I missing something?
So, it is a housekeeping item, and it is currently not written into ordinance. It's, it was a resolution, so this would actually make the Trails Committee an official committee of the town, and put it into the ordinance where, where it legally belongs. So, and then.
Sorry, Angie, you put out that, those last couple of words.
And it would just put it, put it into ordinance where, where, into the municipal code where it legally belongs. So it makes them official. And then the second part of your question about the restructuring, it would restructure, so, but it doesn't preclude people from still participating and volunteering. What it does is, it creates five voting membership seats on this committee or advisory board, and those people would need to be, they would need to be residents of Green Mountain Falls, but other folks that have been involved for years could still volunteer, they could still participate in those meetings. They just wouldn't have voting membership. And the whole premise behind that is to give people who have a stake in the game and who are, who do live in Green Mountain Falls, the, you know, people who have a stake in the game. And I think, I think we discussed that one a little bit in, in previous meetings, but.
So just a little background, we have been discussing this through all of June. This is the third time we've discussed it. It is making advisory boards into an official ordinance as opposed to a resolution. Resolutions can be changed quickly and easily, almost any time, ordinances make it more into law. As, as this is written, and as I see it, this puts an advisory board into place that has an interest in all of our open space and recreation, which we actually have quite a bit, and I think our parks and our trails and our pool and all of that needs to work together in one committee. But that being said, that being said, this doesn't stop the people who love to work on Trails from coming together and working on Trails and doing the work that they love. In fact, this group that we're trying to form with this ordinance is more the people who are going to have the checklist and make sure that the people who love building Trails are going through the checklist of, have you gotten the proper easements? Have you followed whatever other rule is going to be in the town? Have you done any impact studies? Is the neighborhood okay with the trailhood in this neighbor? This is more of the group that sees the rules. It doesn't stop a group from getting together regardless of where they live and forming their own group and the happy trail-building group that would work with this advisory group. In some ways, the advisory group takes the onus of having, having to follow the laws, they can follow what's being advised to them. Margaret, I'm sure you have something to say on the, on this particular ordinance? Maybe not? Well, I don't get Margaret, and we talked to Johnny. Johnny, did that answer your questions?
Yeah, it did, I mean, my concern is that I don't want to alienate all the wonderful volunteers who I have been working with Trails for, you know, a number of years, and also including those people who aren't residents. I guess my question is just more clarifying what it is the ordinance will actually do. And I think part of that was, was clarified that right now Trails aren't even included in the municipal code, and this actually includes Trails within that. I do think that, you know, having an advisory board that can work on communicating and providing that link between Trails and, and the town, I think that's important in order to reduce our liability, given some of the issues that have kind of come up over, over the years. And so I think it's important that we have some type of communication. But I just want to make sure that, that all the people who are currently volunteering, I wanted to see from their perspective, how this ordinance, if it comes to pass, how would that actually affect those people, particularly the non-resident volunteers?
Right, thank you. Katherine?
Yeah, I, I'm hearing, you know,
Yeah, I'm hearing, you know, that the Trails Committee, you know, they're a very dedicated group. The housekeeping, I see, is, you know, I don't want to just repeat what Jane said, but the Trails Committee, because they've been so independent, that's not necessarily always a good thing when it comes to municipal issues. I think that any other entity that was part of the town, part of the municipality, would have a different relationship with the board than the Trails Committee does. You know, like checks and balances, those kinds of things, that I don't really see that relationship in the structure that exists now. And, you know, as we're seeing, there are some issues coming up that, that are hard to get a handle on because it's like, there's too great of a separation, I think. We're not really necessarily on the same page. But as far as how many people participate, you know, as was said, there's nothing limiting the number of volunteers that can participate in the Trails Committee, but it makes sense that, I mean, our other committees, you have to be a resident of Green Mountain Falls to serve and to vote. There's volunteer opportunities, you know, certainly Creek Cleanup Week and those kinds of things are not limited to Green Mountain Falls residents. So to me, it is a housekeeping issue, but I understand that, that the Trails Committee really doesn't want anything to change. I hear that.
Given the size of the Trails Committee as compared to our other committees, would they then be more of a subcommittee under that Parks and Rec Advisory Board Committee?
The way that they're currently structured, you know, they are more of a working group committee and less of an advisory committee. And I think it may be time to think of them in a different way instead of a committee. They can be a group that wants to come to the open space committee and present, and then they can have as many people from as many places as they want because it actually liberates them from our restrictions that we're putting into place in this ordinance. It also would change how they run meetings, you know? If you're an independent group that is not a town group, you can not follow Robert's Rules of Orders and you can not have open meetings. That, whether that's a good thing or not, it's just part of what could be different going forward. But it could still be a group of 11 people or 13 people or 30 people that come up with a great idea for building a trail, and they present it to the open space committee or whatever this group is called, that can say, this is feasible, this isn't feasible, and then present to the board. That's in my head, anyway. Margaret?
Yes, I'm unmuted now. So I got a little reminder to please avoid muting yourself because then I can't unmute again. So, um, so yeah, I agree with what everyone has said. Now, one thing, Angie, I didn't see that there were any real big significant changes compared to the prior. Is there any way, can you highlight what's different? Because I didn't really see a lot of real big differences in the most current draft of this ordinance compared to what the attorney approved before, what the attorney reviewed for us.
Well, I, let's see here. I think the main highlights of this are really the same. Some of the wording in there is different. The main highlights that are being, that are in there is that the committees have five members on each. There's a, there would be a planning commission, a fire mitigation committee, Parks, Rec, and Trails, and then a board of adjustment. Membership will be for in-town residents only. Members could serve on one board. So, one, it's really important that members serve on one board because serving on multiple boards can have a lot of crossover, can create some crossover issues, which I think we're seeing now. But current memberships expire, and all are invited to reapply within the 30-day period when this new thing, if it was approved tonight, when it would take effect, would be 30 days. One additional that I don't think I wrote down was, that I really like, is that there are annual work plans presented to the Board of Trustees by each advisory board for review, and that would include a proposed budget during our budget process even for the next year. So we can, it's a lot more working together, and there's proper oversight by elected bodies. And all of this really was in those resolutions that were not written in ordinance before. It just, you know, there wasn't the staff to help facilitate the process. So it's pretty much the same as the old way. It's just a reminder and putting it into proper law, making the Trails Committee an actual committee of the town.
Okay, thank you for that clarification because I, like I said, I didn't see that there were any major changes at all to this compared to what we've already discussed. And I know, you know, all of the committees really need to have protocols that they follow. They need to follow the proper steps and bring the presentations to the board so we don't end up in situations like we're in right now. And, and I think that this will help, help us to move forward. And I do agree with the lack of crossover because to me, that would be a big conflict of interest, and that's a real big term in my world that I work in, is you really have to avoid conflicts of interest. And I think that this will help us to move forward and help us to have a good plan and good protocols and help us to stay within the confines of the law. Because that's, that's what it all boils down to. It's like, what we're doing needs to be legal. What any committee that represents the town of Green Mountain Falls does needs to be legal, and we need to follow the steps that are involved to do that. So that's, that's what I see in this.
And I think it's a good point. I mean, any board that is representing Green Mountain Falls needs to take that very seriously in how they're in the representation. Margaret, do you have anything further on this? So the question before you is the final adoption of ordinance 2020-03 in its current form, with any additions, or do you want to continue this?
You know, I feel like we've, we've had adequate discussion with this.
Are you making a motion?
So, yeah, I will move to approve this. Well, let me think of what my motion needs to be. I will move to approve the final adoption of ordinance number 2020-03 based on all of our research, all of our input from the town attorneys, and I'd like to see us move forward.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Now, is there any further discussion from the board?
This is De'Annie. I just want to say that I do hear where all the concerns are coming from. I also agree with the other board members when they're saying that, you know, in consulting with the attorneys, we need to have, you know, I think we need to have this ordinance to include trails in our municipal code so that we can reduce liability and improve communication. I am very invested in the trails in the town, and I in no way want to alienate any of the volunteers. And I think that our goal with creating this ordinance would be to try and reduce liability and to improve communication with all of our volunteers.
And with that being said, there, this is a new committee. I would more than strongly encourage, the most strong encourage I could get, to ask who is on the Trails Committee to apply to be on this new open space committee, if they're interested in being on an advisory board. That's, that's the place to be, and this doesn't preclude people from meeting together and building a trail in any way. So that discussion, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor who are saying aye?
Aye.
And that motion passes. The next items on the agenda are Trails and Trails Committee Discussion. The first is Resolution 2020-13, which is a resolution of the town of Green Mountain Falls, ordering that the Trails Committee Advisory Board suspend all meeting and activity. Now, considering we have just discussed this in some great length, this is simply asking that the Trails as an advisory board not meet as the Trails Committee. They can continue to meet if they form their own group or whatever as volunteers about building, and that's fine. This is just separating the current board from the ordinance we just passed. Angie, am I stating that the most legal way?
I believe so. So it's just basically saying that they don't act on behalf of the town anymore.
They don't act on behalf of the town. It doesn't stop them from meeting. It doesn't stop them from having what they want and looking at building more trails. But we do need to work on forming this advisory committee in ordinance 2020-03, so please apply. Now, we will take some, we will take audience participation on that. Rocco, I know you wanted to speak on 2020-13.
Okay, well, it seems like you've made your mind up about the Trails Committee. This is a dedicated Corps of Volunteers. We were standing by to assist the town. I believe there was some public comment, people who had signed up for public comment, at least two people, Watling and Ochkai, when it came to Trails Committee. I've entered these comments in chat with no response. And so this Zoom forum doesn't seem to be working very well to facilitate your public comment and input because there was a couple of people you didn't call upon. Yeah, and so you just voted on an interesting ordinance, which was changed since June and never got to the boards or committees. I find this heavy-handed approach to local governance very troubling. It's time-consuming and costly for these multiple rewrites, edits, and legal reviews, and it detracts from the town's ability to provide essential infrastructure for our residents and visitors, specifically public restrooms. And so I think, Board, you should be reminded on what really matters, and you're doing what you call housekeeping, stripping our committee of voting rights. I take voting rights very seriously, and I hope you do too, because they're most important at the local level. And so this could have been handled a lot better with some communication, and you give me the impression that you're hiding something when it's not properly coordinated. And I don't know if that's by design, but at the very least, it's a time-consuming diversion, and it detracts from reopening the public restrooms, which is job number one. We have Rebecca Ochkai and Chris Watling as a minimum have public comments as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Angie, you have others that are signed up for public comment?
Yep, I've got a list ready to go whenever you're ready.
All right, let's do it.
In the order in which they signed up, I have Dick Bratton. Mr. Bratton, if you would please state your name and address for the public record.
The host gives you permission to unmute yourself. So Dick Bratton, like...
No, start over again.
Yes, please.
My time should start again.
Yeah, it hasn't started, so you still have a full three minutes.
I'm Dick Bratton, 1119 Cerro Honda Avenue for 37 years. I'm Vice Chairman of the Trails Committee and Chairman of the Planning Commission. I want to thank the board for finally establishing a fire mitigation committee. We urgently need that. We urgently need a fire evacuation plan, and we need to do a lot of work cleaning up our town right-ofways as an example to our citizens to reduce the fuel loading. So thank you for doing that. I am a little disappointed to see that the Trails Committee is going to go from 11 members down to, it looks like maybe if we're lucky, we'd get two on the Parks and Trails, Recreation and Trails Committee. That's a significant loss of expressing how the citizens feel about their trails to the town board. I think you should reconsider that and increase the number from five to at least seven. Also, consider providing some alternates to that. Maybe the committee would serve you best if it was a subcommittee to meet separately from the rest of the, either open space or Parks and Rec Committee, so they can concentrate on one subject and not several. I recommend you consider that, please. Actually, the rewrite of the ordinance, in my opinion, was a really good improvement. A lot of the troublesome wording was eliminated, so compliments to the town manager and the town attorney. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dick.
Okay, next on the list, we have Joe Olds. Joe, if you'd please state your name and address for the public record.
Yes, I'm Joe Olds, 11070 Falls Avenue. I didn't, frankly, don't recall putting my name in. I had it in for, I believe, the mayor's thing on Sunday.
Well, if you want to wait and speak under public comment, you are more than welcome, and we will call you, on you again for that.
That would be fine. I have no comment.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and the next on my list I have is Chris Watling. Chris, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Watling. I'm at 9395 Yoot Road in Chappeta Park, and I had a spiel typed out for comments prior to the ordinance, but as of 15 minutes ago, I'm not a committee member anymore. So I, I think it's kind of funny that you'd go for, you'd call it housekeeping, and then you're just rearranging things. In the Army, we call that... In the Army, we call that fixing until it's broke. You're just renaming things. You have a Parks Committee, and you can't even fill it. And you have, I mean, we could have 100 members voting. There's zero burden to the town financially, legally, or morally. And you think you would strive for more inclusivity in the Yoot Pass Committee. I know that the mayor wants, you know, just GMF people, but we're, Yoot Pass, we're all, I mean, we're all relying on this town. We're all together. I mean, I'm here because, you know, I consider myself part of the community. So that's, I know it falls on deaf ears because you guys are worried about lawyers and whatever. Public input isn't really important. But that's, it just seems kind of odd. The, I understand incorporating the Parks Committee into the, in the ordinance, that's great. That needs to be done. But then just go ahead and just rewriting things. That's, it said fix it till it's broke. There was nothing wrong with it. So that's my piece.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next, uh, person is Clay Gafford. Clay, if you'd please state your name and address for the public record.
Uh, 75, 7045 Oak Street. And I just had a comment about the trailheads at Catamount Creek and Thomas Trail. That, that property shows on the official town zoning map as being, it's called Green Mountain Falls Forest Park. It's like a 40-acre section of land that is the trailhead at Catamount Creek for two trails there. And on the Teller County Assessor site, that piece of land shows that it belongs to the Forest Service, not to the town of Green Mountain Falls. And that was some information that I just had discovered and hadn't had a chance to bring it forward. But if that is true, we have the trailhead at Catamount Creek for the Catamount Trail and the Thomas Trail is all built on National Forest, not on the town's property like our official zoning map says. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Clay.
Next on the list, we have Jan Smith. Jan, if you would please state your name and address for the public record.
I've already spoken. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on our list, we have Rebecca Oki. Rebecca, if you'd please state your name and address for the public record.
Yes, I would like to comment, however, on Resolution 2020-4A when we get there. Did you get that?
No, are you talking about Resolution 202014?
Yes, 2020-14A.
Okay.
Resolution.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something, and that will be great.
Okay, uh, next on our list, we have Liz Ives. Liz, if you'd please state your name and address for the public record. It doesn't look like Liz is online, so we can come back to her. Claudia Ellie is next on our list. Ms. Ellie, Mrs. Ellie, if you would please state your name and address for the public record. Hi, Claudia.
Am I being heard?
Yes.
All right. I, I live at 6730 Garfield Avenue. Claudia Ely. And I also have properties besides my home, which I have shared with people as they work with the Trails. I've been with the Trails Committee all along. I see some improvements in management that can be dealt with here. But it seems to me that we are putting, we're restricting the members of the Trails Committee and all their uses by cutting back on our inputting and use. I am really more concerned, I want to clarify this. The, the thing is, I read it online, says we are not allowed to meet. You said that wasn't really quite true. I'd like you to clarify that, please.
I can do that after you finish your three minutes. I don't want to step on your time.
I think that will do it for me. Go ahead.
So what this says is suspend meeting and activity as an advisory board. So we put an advisory board in place under this ordinance. But if you all want to meet and discuss trails and building trails, it's just going to have to be a different place over here, right? You can call yourself Trails Club. It's just going to have to be a different difference title rather than representing the town. You're representing your group and your Trails. You see what I mean there?
That, that says to me that the town would not back us in any way.
What it says to me is your group can meet, discuss trails, and put it through to the Parks and Open Space Committee to make sure that all the legalities are met, the financials are in place, whatever other rules need to set, and then you can go from there.
Okay, all right.
That's how I see it.
All right. I, I do want to make a comment about the public restrooms, but perhaps this isn't the time. Will there be another time in here?
I think that's going to come up under 202014. And I think that'll set more there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and the next, uh, person on our list, we have Todd Dixon. Todd, if you'd please state your name and address for the record, and they will unmute you, but you have to unmute yourself also.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Todd Dixon. I live at 11045 Iona Avenue. Based on the previous vote, I have modified my, uh, comments a little bit. First off, I want to publicly thank anyone who's worked on the trails in Green Mountain Falls. The quantity and quality of the trails were a contributing factor. And my wife's in my decision to keep our property here and eventually build up on it. I find it very unfortunate that something that has done so well and is so paramount to the success of the comprehensive strategic plan has a cloud of controversy associated with it. From my observation, it, you know, I'm new. I'll grant you that. It appears that the issues have been recently raised or not insurmountable. In addition, as someone who is also very recently a permanent resident, my observation is that the issues appear to be rooted in a good understanding of the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of all involved. And I was kind of hoping that rather than suspending all quote-unquote "all" advisory board meeting and, and activities, it would seem to make more sense to have those involved, create something like we had in the FAA, where we created charters. And what it does is it takes language in the ordinances, which tends to be a little broad brush, and we tend to create specific roles, responsibilities, and expectations for everyone to use. I've had some experience with this while working for the Federal Aviation Administration. I'm more than willing to work with all those involved to draft something like this for, for board consideration. And then I'll have a comment on the, on the 202014 as well. Uh, thank you for allowing me to comment.
All right, thank you.
Next on our All right, next on our list, we have Jesse Stroop. Jesse, if you'd please state your name and local address for the record, and you have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to speak hearing public input, Agenda Item 7.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the list, we have David Britton. David, if you'd please state your name and address for the record, and you do need to unmute yourselves.
And mute, and mute yourself too, David. Can't hear you.
Okay, yes, hi. Uh, my name is David Britton. Uh, we are at 11490 and 11492 Belvedere. Uh, we are at the dead end of Belvedere, and we've been up there since about 1945. My concern is, well, is multifold. Number one is the crowds and the lack of control on the crowds going up and down Belvedere. You know, from the beginning, we've always stated that there needs to be some signage along the way that tells people to go up their single file because they seem to treat all of Belvedere as one big wide path, and that's a real issue. Um, I've just recently just been looking over Clay Gafford's, uh, plan for helping with the trails. I will try to get through that here in the next day or so, a little more detailed. But some of the parking solutions, I, I, I believe are, we need to have some metered parking. And we have to find some way that's going to allow them to park, but for residents to be able to actually have access to parking. You can't, you can't find a parking spot on the weekends downtown. If you go downtown, I call it downtown, but in the village, you go down to the pantry and you can't find a place to park, and there's no, there's nothing down there for somebody who's handicapped. My mother has an issue getting around and can only walk a certain amount of distances, and there's nothing down there. The, the businesses down there are not seeing a lot of traffic coming into their, into their establishments from the, uh, from the parks, from these, uh, from the trail hikers, uh, which is allegedly what it was supposedly supposed to bring in revenue. Well, I, I, from what I understand, it's really not happening at all. I'm not seeing the marshal around patrolling this. I don't see him out there watching these people. I was up there all last week and didn't see him come to the end of Belvedere once, and there were people up there parking. There's nothing up there, and there's no fines for people. There's no ramifications for people who park where they're not supposed to. I've had people trespassing on my, I was up there just for 10 days, and I had to kick three people off my property trying to hike up a mountain. This is getting absolutely out of control, and I know there's a lot of people from Cascade who do this, and I appreciate them coming up. But they don't have to deal with the ramifications of what these hikers do around their property. It used to be a nice, quiet place up at the end of Belvedere where I could sit on my front porch, have a cold beverage, maybe do a little reading, and it'd be quiet. And it's not like that anymore. And it's, and it's a, it's very disappointing. It's very disappointing. And I've mentioned this before at other town halls, and it feels like it just goes on deaf ears because maybe we're summer people. But you know what? We're part of the tax base in this town, especially from property taxes, even though I'm in Teller County. But nonetheless, my time is up.
David, thank you. And let me compliment you on your background. That's a, that's a good 4th of July background there, too.
Okay, next up, uh, we have Jane Friedman. Jane, I'm a little confused as to whether you wanted to comment on this item or on the public input item. And you will need to unmute yourself. And I'm not seeing Jane Friedman, uh, has logged into the meeting. So next on the list, we can come back to that if she, maybe she just got kicked out for a minute. Uh, the next and the last person on my list here is Don Vestecca. Don, if you'd please state your name and, and local address for the record, and you will need to unmute yourself. And I'm not seeing, uh, Don on here. So that concludes my list. If I've, if I've mistaken anybody, they can definitely message the host and we can get that corrected.
All right. Board, so Resolution 202013. Margaret?
Well, um, I think there still needs to be clarification again to everyone who's attending and everyone who's listening that the suspension of the Trails Committee Advisory Board is not the same as completely saying, oh, there's no Trails Committee, for lack of a better term at this point. You know, and, um, I, I feel that people are invested in this, and I appreciate the work. But it's also really unfortunate the things that have been brought to our attention recently that haven't gone through proper channels, and we really need to have that moving forward. So, um, I just, I don't see this as saying, oh, there's no more trails. It's just a restructure and a different way to do it. And the people that are on the Trails Committee, again, for lack of a better term, the people that are on, on the Trails organization, whatever they're going to call themselves, they will still have all the voting rights that they have now. It will just need to be brought to the advisory board. And I think, I think people, I'm, I'm hoping that people will be open to seeing that because we, we do have protocols that need to be followed. And I think that's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Let me reiterate here, this is, we still appreciate the work of this committee. We appreciate how hard they've worked through the years. They acknowledge the many volunteer hours that they've put in. They're volunteers, just like we're volunteers, and we appreciate it. I would strongly suggest that they get together with Todd Dixon and take him up on that suggestion and try to, to formalize their group a little bit. Johnny?
Um, I just, uh, yeah, I agree with what's been said before. I don't see why the people who are currently in the Trails Committee can't continue to meet, but, um, under a different name. I don't know with the new ordinance if we have an option of creating subcommittees or subgroups. But I think that's something we should also explore as well.
Yeah, Parks Committee certainly can form subcommittees for everything that they want to. There's nothing that precludes that in any way. Liz Ives is back on. Liz, did you want to speak on this ordinance, 202013 or 202014? Which is going to be the Trails and bathrooms and so forth.
It looks like Liz's audio is not connected at this time on her end.
All right, we'll go to Catherine, and if she jumps on for 202013, we'll get her on there. Catherine?
Um, you, you talking to me?
Yes, you.
Because there was a, I think there was Catherine who had signed up to speak earlier, but anyway.
Okay.
I really appreciate, I really appreciate, um, Mr. Bratton's leadership in the Trails Committee. I know it's been something that he's been passionate about, and I really appreciate the comments he made this evening. And, um, and he may, um, be able to, uh, it's, it sounds like he understands what, um, the resolution is for. And hopefully he can, he can help the, uh, the, um, the Trails Group move forward.
I think that's a great point. So, Board, there's a resolution on the table. It's Resolution 202013. Is there a motion?
Um, I'll move that we approve the Resolution 202013.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Is there any further discussion on this resolution? I would, I would again reiterate, I think it's a great idea to get together with Todd Dixon. He seems to have a great grasp on forming a charter for a subgroup. I would really strongly encourage that and continue to see the good work that's going. And honestly, subgroup, an independent group, may be able to expand and grow and look at also other trails in New Pass. It might be very liberating if we just look at it as positive as possible. With that said, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 202014, and it's a discussion for at the direction of the town manager to close all trails and trailheads in the town due to COVID-19 health concerns. Now, there's been discussion out there in the public that this is just heavy-handed, and we're just going to do it, and that's not it at all. If an item does not appear on the agenda, we can't discuss it. If we pass something like this without discussion, that would be heavy-handed. But this gives us an opportunity to discuss, to discuss how it's written, or discuss any other alternatives or suggestions for what can we do to make this better? What could we do differently? What are the pros and cons? That's why a resolution like this hits the table. Currently, right now, the big discussions in town with COVID consider a lot how it's extremely hard, if not impossible, for us to sanitize our bathrooms. As most people know here, we don't have running water. And what has been suggested strongly by the health officials is that you need to have bathrooms with running water. If you don't have that, you need to consider either the outhouses like we have or porta potties to kind of be a last resort. You know, it's been suggested we can hang, just hang a sign on the door that says, use it your own risk. And this is speaking for myself. That may get us out of liability, but does that give us out of moral responsibility? Because if you allow people to use a porta potty, that could be a COVID center, and they catch it, or they take it home to their family in some manner. Morally, I think that's a big question of if we're okay with that. That's a difficult question. So the resolution before us is, should we close trails, it's trailheads? Now, we have options to, we have options to look at things differently, to change it, to vote on it as is. But this is a time to really be creative and see if there's any other solutions out there that might temporarily help our parking for the heavy-use situation. I know there's a lot of people that want to comment on trails and if they should be shut or not shut. Let me say this, I know that people also want to keep it open only to local residents, which I'm really interested in hearing your solutions of how that would work. So that being said, let's open it up to the comments.
Doing public, the public comment list again? I'm slacking, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
All right, so I'm just going to go down the list again. Dick Bratton had signed up for this agenda item, so the whole Trails Committee discussion. So I'm not sure if he had more comments on this one. And you will need to unmute yourself.
Dick Bratton, 119, 11190 Hondo Avenue. It's sad to see us lose our trails on one big lump. I'm hoping the town board can figure out a way to at least allow our residents to take their daily hikes. So you'll have to have some way to figure out a pass program and have the marshal enforce it. The biggest problem will be telling all of our friends from downtown that they can't use our trails. That's not going to go well. I'm sorry, one other thing. I hope that the board's actions tonight won't crush our Trails volunteer program. There's a lot of pride there. And quite frankly, a lot of the volunteers we get feel like they're in a very close social group and enjoy each other's company, and that's been the heart of our success. Looks like we may be jeopardizing that, so I'm concerned about that.
All right, is that the end of your comment, Dick?
Just one last thought. Still have a little time. If the Trails Committee is crushed, who is going to maintain the trails for safety and maintenance? It appears it would be de facto, have to be done by Public Works. They certainly are not equipped to do that. So you may have to think about some budgeting changes to put that capability in there if you need to. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on the list, we've got Joe Olds. Joe, if you, you would have to unmute yourself.
Joe, did you want to speak on this item or are we waiting for public input in general?
I think Joe is muted.
I think I'm out, off now. No, I have, same as before, I don't know why my name keeps coming up.
Okay.
Take it off the list.
You're on this list, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Watling. And you'll need to unmute yourself, please.
All right, real quick, I was thinking, as far as parking goes, I know Mr. Britton had an issue with parking on Belvidere. And ultimately, I mean, it doesn't really fall on trails to maintain, you know, crowds. Ultimately, any decision made, you have to have the people enforce whatever decision. So if there's designated parking spaces in downtown for businesses only between certain hours, maybe some to that effect, and hikers, you know, other periods, but again, if no one's enforcing it. And maybe suggesting for restrooms, I know almost everywhere else in Forest Service land has vault toilets. I know with the water source close by, they may not be possible, but I'm just an option to have, you know, vaults, you know, everybody uses those, like, at your own risk. It kind of gets rid of liability, but yeah, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you.
Next on the list here is Clay Gafford, and you will need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, 7045 Oak Street. I just wanted to say that I agree with the resolution that the town is doing, that we need to, a reset point so we can get in and get the system restructured that will fit the town better and our sanitary needs. And I think it's going to turn out where it's going to be a good thing for the trails in the long run. They're going to suffer some now, but by getting them shut down where we can get the prop, talk about it in groups and get them opened up right, where they're legal and we're making some money off of them by charging, we're going to be better off in the long run. And the local people will not be as upset with the invasion of all the hikers that we have once we can start controlling and have the sanitary issues taken care of. That's all.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Rocco Blasi, and you will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, thanks. Rocco Blasi, 10955 Belvidere Ave. When we were still a committee, which was when this, this draft was being written, the Trails Committee was not consulted in the COVID closure proposals. So I say, whoa, whoa, where are you going, town? You claimed we were not advising you on trails, but then you didn't consult us about this. So what troubles me most about these old business resolutions is the lack of transparency and communication. I think those are rooms for improvement. I was out on Catamount Trail today with a small volunteer maintenance crew. And what I experienced affirmed my faith in hikers. Out of 25 hikers, 20 hikers stopped and offered to help carry timber. And these were solid people willing to help. And Dick, I agree with you, we want to keep our sense of community as a group. Todd, thank you for reaching out with your charter proposal. I will follow up with you on that. But I'm seeing good things out on the trails, and I'm seeing happy faces, which we don't really see in a lot of the businesses right now. COVID, so the hikers are out in open air. And our governor, who's been extremely conservative in easing restrictions, is promoting open spaces and hiking. So trustees, if your logic leads you to close the trails, you must also close the town parks where people congregate in denser numbers. You can't pick and choose which public spaces remain open and maintain consistency or make a defensible decision. This really feels like an easy excuse to close the trails. Also, the document is incomplete. It fails to identify steps and measures for reopening the trails. If the town cannot open a public restroom, how are we going to get the trails back? That's basically what I want to say. I have offered a proposal to the town manager. I think we could get some volunteers if the $60,000 in CARES Act money is not available. And I guess that's a question for the rest of my time. Where's that $60,000 going? Can someone answer? Standing by, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next on our list, we have Jan Smith, and you will need to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing Jan on here. Okay, so I'm not seeing Jan on here. If you're under another name, please just message the host, and we'll get that corrected. Moving down the list, we have Rebecca Oki. And you will need to unmute yourself.
Unmuted. Rebecca Ochkai, I live at 10910 Iona Avenue here in Green Mountain Falls. And I totally disagree with Clay Gafford saying that we need a total reset of our trails. We discussed the legalities and financials that the mayor has brought up. The financials are the Trails Committee has cost the town nothing in the 22 years I've been here. The legalities in, also in the 22 years, there have been two questionable actions of the Trail Committee. The first one was done by the Gehrigs, when there was a social trail not made by the Trail Committee, and the Gehrigs vehemently complained to the town and that the Trails Committee actually resolved that problem, even though it was not their problem. So that one was not a Trail Committee problem. The second one was brought up by Clay Gafford, when he claimed that there was a portion of the Dewey Mountain Trail that was on his property. After a survey, it was proven that there was not a portion of that trail on his property. He was totally mistaken, as I happen to believe that he is on the trailheads for Thomas and Catamount. I think that's just another reason that he has for closing the trails. And I would investigate that prior to just believing that. I would also like to say that, once you close the trail, the Dewey Mountain Trail because of Clay Gafford, and it turned out we weren't infringing on his property, then the second reason to close the trails happens to come up to be COVID. I think that's disingenuous. I think the problem of parking and restrooms is separate from trails, and you're throwing them all together. I want you to open up restrooms, but that is not the Trails' problem. And the lack of transparency in all of this is just mind-boggling. There's more, and I'm running out of time. Okay. So in all the miles of trails that we've built, there have been only really one discrepancy, and that is a small portion of the Bratton Trail was on not our property. And the Trails Committee resolved that within a day of finding that out. So please don't close the trails. This is not a good reason to close trails. That's my plea, and my time is up. Thank, thank you for doing what is mostly a unappreciated job to the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our list, I have Liz Ives. And I think there... I'm not seeing Liz on our list here.
Saw her on there for a minute.
I think there's, she's had some connectivity troubles, but if she comes back on, we'll try to get her in there. Next on the list, we have Claudia Ely. And you will need to unmute yourself.
The, my, my computer says the host is not allowing me to unmute myself.
We can.
You're unmuted, so must have worked.
All right, all right, I'll ignore the note. All right, I, I would like to go back to the restrooms, whether or not the trails are opened. And I, I'm one of the ones who hears the pleas of the summer residents wanting to be able to use the trails. The summer residents get a short trip in many ways. They pay plenty of taxes, and when they can come, they would like to, to be able to use these facilities. And they would like to be able to go to a Mr. Potts or whatever brand you like and be able to use sanitary facilities. And I understand the mayor's concern about transmission. But this is a, this is, this is life. And if the children or the family members don't have enough sense to be sanitary in how they go along, this isn't just a Trails problem or a parks problem. This is the problem of every time I go to the store, I have to be conscientious. Every time I leave my home, I have to be conscientious. And that's what people need to be trained to do. It's not limited to this particular situation. And I think it's just abominable that we don't have any sanitary facilities in our parks downtown. That's it.
Okay, Claudia, thank you.
Okay, next on our list, we have Todd Dixon. And Todd, you will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Todd Dixon, 11045 Iona Avenue. I just asked the board to consider not overreact on this item unless the state of Colorado mandates closures of state parks. I understand the virus, its effects are very real. I'm one of those higher-risk categories myself. and I will mask up and take precautions as I need them. But my main point is I'd really like to see data being the decision-maker for impacting our local communities. And if data actually shows that the infections are on the rise, and the cause, again, the cause, is lack of social distancing in state parks and recreational facilities, then yeah, it may be appropriate to go ahead and close. But I'd really like for that to be based upon data, and preferably from someone reliable like the Department of Health from El Paso County. Again, thank you for your opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have David Britton. And you will need to unmute yourself. And I'm not seeing him here in our list. So next in the list, we've got Dawn Vostekka. And I'm not seeing him in the list. If I've skipped over anyone that's under a different name, or please just message the host, and we'll get you taken care of. That's all I have on the list for you.
All right. Well, as always, it's an interesting discussion. Kind of sad that people didn't come up with any solutions other than black or white, close or don't close. And so, "I will do it myself," said the little red hen. And actually, I am stealing this from Cactus Caldwell, who sent a suggestion to me that I thought was interesting. And this is, again, purely for discussion, board. What if we considered closing for, it would be the next week and a half, all the trails, during which time his wife has offered to design a parking pass and even laminate? They would be sent to all the residents so that local people could hike still. And then, and here's your stroke of genius, that would pay for this, they could be distributed to the local businesses, who could sell them for... We would get half, and they would get half of the proceeds. And I think I really appreciate that there's some sort of solution other than close-not-close. And that being said, we have three more people who ask to be recognized from the previous conversation. So if we could recognize those three, and then we can continue with more discussion. Oh, and David Britton's back, too. So Angie, if you would bring David up, and then we have three others who requested from the previous discussion.
I really don't have anything. I already had my... I said my piece earlier.
Okay.
But I would like to say that I have had stuff stolen off my property in the past year or two. So that is a concern of mine. But that's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then I think they were going to message you the names of those three folks, mayor.
All right.
Apologies.
Let me pull that up here, so I know what we have, and I will send those to you. I think they were on a previous list, if I'm not mistaken, which I often am.
Am I able to go?
Please.
For the record. Yes, my name is Judith Piazza. I live at 11160 Belvedere, and I've been a resident here for three years now. And I want to just thank you all first, especially those who are volunteering their time. I know it's an overwhelming and often thankless role that you play. However, I am just so disappointed in hearing that our town politics has allowed for a lack of communication and a lack of transparency in making these decisions. So I'll start with just saying that the bathrooms and the trails, that seems like it's just like a given, that these are not the same things. So they should be separate conversations. The communication issues seem to really make a difference in getting everybody on the same page. If people... I mean, this is the first I've ever heard about the trails being closed completely as a decision point. If communication doesn't happen in a timely manner, if things are sent out the night before, or the minutes aren't even posted from the past two meetings, how can we be informed in making suggestions and taking opportunities? I am completely not in favor of just throwing a paid parking pass into the hands of businesses and into people in our town without complete consideration of what that really means. Why haven't we tried looking, getting everybody to the table? I mean, I really respect the people who are coming forward and saying, "There's too many people in our town, too much traffic on Belvedere." Can we come together and look at... Can we stop the promotions? Can we say that the parking is limited? Or there are so many other solutions besides going to paid parking. And it might be a little longer to take effect, but we can really look at this issue so that we can bring all the viewpoints to the table, not just one or two that say, "Oh, we have to close all the trails." I mean, this just seems just so disappointing to me that we would even consider something like that at this point. So I'll make some other comments during public input, but for now, I think that's the main points as far as this particular resolution. Let me just make sure. Oh, I also really want to say that, along with Chris Cassie, I am feeling so badly that so many people who have given so many hours are being disregarded and feel badly at this moment in our town politics. Thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you.
I believe Mac Patron is on the list next. And you'll have to unmute yourself.
There it is. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Board of Trustees, I'm Mac Patron. I live at 10840 Myrtle Street. Board of Trustees, I think that you have done yeoman work. I agree with everything you've done. I was a member of the Board of Trustees off and on for over 28 years. And I've not seen the Board of Trustees act in the best interest of the town for a long, long time. And I think that this evening, you've done just that. Your first and foremost obligation in your seat is to protect the town, even if you have to protect the town from themselves. I appreciate the sarcasm from some of the commenters, but the fact remains that the Board of Trustees, in their actions this evening, have done yeoman work to protect the town and the townspeople and the taxpayers. The idea that they've snuck around and done something underhanded, I think is absurd. And I believe that that was part of several of the sarcastic remarks about transparency was probably part of that. But the board, I believe, has done exactly, maybe not exactly, what everybody thinks should have been done. They had to do something. You can't just sit and do nothing. So they may have upset a few people, but please understand that these people have done what they think is important to protect the town. I suppose I'll just have something else to say during public comment. But I think the town, the Board of Trustees, has done exactly what they should have done, possibly could have pulled back on a couple of things. But the point is that they are there, and they're protecting the town of Green Mountain Falls, not just the Trails Committee, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list, we have Jessie Stroop. Is that correct, Jessie? Or did you want to... You were just under public input.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
So I just wanted to... A few things. As it relates to tourism, this decision would impact summer residents and families who have planned trips to come out and stay. That affects the hotels in town, the short-term rentals, restaurants, and the shops. I've been here for the last two weeks, and I have observed so many... I've observed families in disharmony because the children need to go to the restroom, and they don't have a place to go, and the parents send them down to the creek. And I'm watching this happen from my office. And it's sad. We have failed them. And if we have to make this decision about the trails, I think we have to make it about the park, too, because it's a serious problem at the park. And I hope that there's a better solution than closing the trails in the park. I did just coordinate an event through the... With guidance from El Paso Public County Health, and we were able to have a block party. Yes, it was difficult. Yes, there were a lot of restrictions, but we were able to get it done, and we were quite successful. I mean, we just don't have to be afraid of the hard work. I mean, this morning, I had a discussion with Clay Gafford, where we talked about immediately, as soon as this weekend, being able to open the restrooms at the pool building and use volunteers or staff paid by the grant money received for COVID, and have that be official hiker check-in, where people, where hikers go, and they're instructed on where to park, which trails are open, allow them to use the restroom before they hike up, give them a place to put their garbage, inform them that they need to have their dogs on a leash, and let them know that the town of Green Mountain Falls would prefer them to wear masks on the trails and to walk in the single-file way down Belvedere. Capturing hikers as they come in, giving them information, telling them what we expect as a town from them will make them behave better. And I do think that that's doable as soon as this weekend, rather than closing the trails. And I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and help get that accomplished. And I think there's lots of folks who would. So if you would consider that, I think, you know, looking into an immediate thing that stops us from closing the trails is a good idea. We can have a committee that looks at longer-term goals and put those quickly into effect. But these are compounding issues with the restrooms, parking, garbage, dogs. This has evolved over time, and the knee-jerk reaction to stop it all seems like an overreaction.
Thank you, and I really appreciate that you came with positive and solutions that could work, and I really appreciate that.
Okay, next on the list, we have Liz Ives. And Liz, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All righty. So I am totally in disagreement with closing the trails. I do understand the parking. It does bring in people into our town, but having looked at El Paso County's daily data on COVID for the last over a month, we are less than 5% per 100,000. And the county has 600,000 people who live in it. So when you look at it from that perspective, we have truly flattened our curve. So to call it for COVID-19 health concerns, I have to say I respectfully disagree. And I also looked at who is reporting having COVID and where their place-of-work, restaurants, all that. It's also on the public health website from El Paso County. And Green Mountain Falls was not included in that, in any of the restaurants and hotels or anything of that nature. So I have a hard time understanding why, five months in, we're looking at COVID health concerns, where we could be, in a positive way, I agree with Jessie 100%, we could open bathrooms, and we could have volunteers to help them. And we can also have signage that's the same things that were posted at the Green Box Arts with social distancing, six feet away. Don't come when you're sick, you know? And wear a mask if you are passing people on the trails. And if we have to go to paid parking, then so be it. But then all our parking has to be open, which at this present point is not. So that is my thoughts on it. I am against closing the trails. I use them for exercise. And with gyms closed, and personally, I don't want to pay for a gym when I have this beauty right outside my door. So I don't want you taking that away from me without our input. And, you know, why? I don't know. I just think that would impact our businesses also in a negative light. That's what I got.
Okay, and that was the last person on my list.
Right, thank you. I accidentally unmuted myself because there was some giant creature on my back porch, and I had to see what bear or what was back there dropping in on the meeting. You never know. So, board, we've heard lots of pros and cons with closing the trailheads. And let me say this about that, because this kind of came about because we have seen such an incredible increase in hikers. And I think that's completely because of the restrictions that are out there, and people can't be out there. And it's also come because we've noticed when Waldo closed, and this year, the In Klein closed, we saw a huge spike in hiker participation. The concerns that have come before us in letters and some online today, people are very concerned about people walking in the roads and the bathrooms. And so it is all interconnected, because the more people you get, the more need for bathrooms there are. Our little vault toilets down here that we call the outhouses or the park bathrooms or whatever simply weren't made to meet the volume of people that there are. But that aside, we cannot keep them COVID-clean. There is no running water. We used to have hand sanitizer, but that, as far as I know, has been vandalized. And we don't have it anymore, as does happen. And we have a real concern about the people who come to town. We've had a couple of suggestions offered, and I would like to hear from the rest of the board about what your reactions are. And Catherine, I would like to start with you on that.
Thank you. Yeah. It's a complicated issue. It's... It's, um, I mean, in terms of, um, the effects of having so many people coming into town. Um, one of the things I don't see listed here is, um, uh, emergency evacuation issues. Um, if we were to have a fire with the people parking the way they do, we'd be toast. It's, you know, and, and I, and I know that, um, you know, in addition to, um, safety issue for the residents, uh, I mean, I, just today, just driving a little bit through town, there were so many cars parked on the road that there would be no way for an emergency vehicle to get through, let alone for a resident to try to get out while an emergency vehicle was trying to get up the road. It just couldn't happen. And, um, I know people are parking where they're not supposed to. I realize we don't have, um, you know, the, uh, personnel to enforce parking. It's all to enforce parking if you don't know, you know, if the, if that car belongs to a resident or the guest of a resident or whatever that is. I mean, I realize that parking is something that we're working on. I realize that, um, uh, the restroom facilities are something else that we're working on. I mean, there's, there, there are several things that are in the list. But we're looking at what can we do to improve the situation currently? Um, and I personally like the idea of using the, um, the pool restrooms. And, um, you know, again, that's been something I've thought about, but just figured we didn't have the personnel, um, to take care of that. Because again, you know, in the situation with, um, the pandemic.
Well, and that's, that's the real crux of the issue, is you would have to have somebody down there from, what, eight to five, eight to six? Um, and we don't have that employee currently. And it would also have to be someone who was willing to sanitize the facility, because there's no way we can open the pool without having someone there to monitor it, because we can't secure the facility. It, it's, um, it's open from the back through to the empty pool, and that's a huge liability. So that is a question, a concern, but it is a solution. So, um,
Madam Mayor, may I?
Pardon me, Angie?
Uh, the, the pool house and the pool is also winterized. Uh, it would be de-winterized completely to open those specific bathrooms.
Right, right. Um, Danielle, what are your ideas?
Oh, I, I think just with regard to the restrooms, I, I think, I, I agree. We have to have something for people to use. And, um, in trying to figure out longer-term solutions, I sent, um, some, uh, emails trying to figure out what the cost would be to maintain a restroom. It sounds like to increase capacity for the existing restroom is about 20,000. Um, to create a new restroom would be more like 50,000 to 60,000. Um, so I think we need to start thinking about long-term solutions, because this is a problem that's not going to go away, even with this current crisis. So I, you know, I am in favor of, of putting porta-potties there now. It seems like the most immediate solution, because people not, you know, not using any type of facility is causing an additional public health problem on top of COVID. Um, so I think that needs to be addressed. Um, so I think having porta-potties will help somewhat. Um, you know, other ideas for reducing the amount of traffic, um, you know, and not all these, these are just ideas I'm throwing out, but other states have, instead of closing down open spaces, have just really tried to crack down on limiting and, uh, closing down parking, public parking. So I don't know if there's a way to try and do that first as a step before restricting the trails. Another option that was mentioned, uh, was restricting the trails just to residents. And I know that that's not necessarily enforceable, but if that was something where it, it, we did get a tremendous amount of traffic and we needed to try and reduce the amount of, uh, trail traffic, that could be something that could be advertised that they are closed except to residents. And we might get a, a decrease in, uh, people just by advertising that. Um, so those are just some thoughts off the top of my head. Um, you know, I think that with, with the current status of COVID, I, and with what I've seen on the trails and with traffic, um, I see less of a concern with, with transmission from COVID in the open spaces and more of a problem with, with just the general, uh, traffic and illegal parking and dogs off-leash and all of that, and the, the issues with bathrooms. Um, so I just, those are my comments.
Thank you. Margaret?
Um, I just, I completely agree with the comments that have already been made. Um, I do like the idea of the pool restrooms, but I don't see how it could be a reality because of the, the current situation with, with the building being winterized, you know? And, um, boy, as far as, as far as the parking and the trails, you know, we, we are extremely aware for parking and for restrooms, that there's a lot of work to do. Um, one idea that was suggested to me for restrooms is possibly turning them into a paid restroom situation. So, you know, as far as suggestions go, I think it's worth looking into also, um, just for ideas. And I really want to encourage everyone to please help us with solutions and help send ideas. Um, you know, because you never know what little gem is going to be there somewhere that nobody's thought of before, because I hadn't thought of paid before until somebody suggested it to me. And I thought, oh, that's, that's an interesting idea, you know? And there, there are just so many different issues here that we have to deal with. Um, but ultimately, it's sanitation, it's safety, and, um, that's what we need to do to move forward. Now, I do, I do believe that we might want to consider, um, not moving on this resolution yet and possibly amending it besides health concerns. But it's, it's only, it's only a, a suggestion for discussion at this point.
So what is your suggestion to add to the, um, besides health concerns?
Besides health concerns, I think it needs to be safety. It needs to be due to, to, um, parking, due to lack of safety. Um, and, you know, as Catherine had suggested, there's, you know, the, the reality of emergency vehicles not being able to be, to get there, because there's, there's so much parking everywhere. Um, that's, that's another safety issue.
And, um, um, as, um, David Britton mentioned, uh, the, uh, you know, all this influx of people also increases the, um, in- incidence of burglary that has, um, that's, that's been an issue from time to time, um, especially around Belvedere. You know, the, they can look like a hiker, but they're actually casing the place. And, um, yeah, with just so many people, it's just another issue, and with the parking.
Well, and not only, not only parking, but access and the amount of people that are all over the roads and the possibility of, um, someone being hurt. You know, you just, you just don't know. You just don't know.
Another thought is-
I did see, go ahead.
Another thought that i- if the crowds become unmanageable, um, one other suggestion is prior to closing all the trails in just kind of a blank statement would be to put some type of restriction just on the weekends as well. When, I mean, that's appears to be when the, the crowds come.
So what would your suggestion be to restrict, um, to local activity on the weekend? Or what, what do you think in those terms?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I, I don't, I see that we need to close the trails down completely. But I think we need, do need to start coming up with some ideas about, about dealing with the incoming crowds. Um, because if they do get worse, then I think we're going to have to start making some hard decisions. Um, so one could be just restricting the trails only to residents on the weekends. Um, one option could be restricting all the parking to residents on the weekends, um, putting some type of restriction in so that we are making some steps to try and curb the amount of people coming in. Um, with the idea about a paid bathroom, um, I think that could be something that could be explored for, for that pool facility. If using funds from a paid bathroom could be, uh, feasible for providing staff to help clean it.
I was just going to say that I, I noticed that Old Colorado City, um, Bancroft Park now has paid, uh, facilities. They're, they look like they're brand new.
Yeah.
Down there. Um, and they, they had earlier had vandalism in their, uh, public restrooms. So I guess that was one of the ways they solved that problem.
Well?
Um, I, I also agree with Margaret. I mean, yeah, the pandemic is an issue, but that's really not the, the only issue. And, you know, I don't know if we could use some COVID funds to, you know, some of the CARES funds, rather, um, to, um, enforce parking restrictions, you know, whether it's ticketing, towing. I mean, people, so- something needs to get their attention, because the signs aren't doing it.
Well, and then the question is too, is if we feel it's okay to, um, use porta-potties, does the kick money pay for that? And I don't know.
May I weigh in on this one?
Of course.
So, uh, if we'd like to install porta-johns, uh, say downtown at the lake park, maybe two there and one over at, uh, near the pool by the tennis court park, uh, or even two there. It would be about $200 a month, uh, maintained by a third party. They have a locking mechanism on the hand sanitizer. Um, they do have issues with toilet paper theft still, uh, which is an odd thing to say out loud. But it would be about $200 a month per unit. We could probably have them dropped later this week and, and the CARES funds would, um, would cover. We could use some of those CARES funds, which we already do have. I'm working on a, a, a big budget proposal, uh, and it's with the county right now for review. Um, because of our COVID-19 concerns, uh, we could utilize that money for some of the porta-johns, um, maintained by a third party, cleaned once a week. Um, you know, the COVID concerns about the trails and the health concerns there, um, we certainly could hire a, a, in, uh, a first responder, uh, because of our COVID concerns to assist with enforcement on it, you know, the trails plan that we come up with. Um, and, uh, the marshal and I are working on a, a draft parking ordinance, um, which proposes a number of different solutions to, uh, the parking challenges that we're currently facing. Of course, that'll have to go through the public process and it will take some time to get there. But, um, I think, I think I've addressed most, most of the stuff. If there's anything else that I can address, please let me know.
And Angie, how, how much would it cost to get that pool facility up and running just for the first customer to be able to use it?
The porta-johns?
Um, no, the, the pool facility, they had mentioned.
So we'd have to call the pool guy, um, who would have to de-winterize the building. Um, the building is full of, uh, equipment for the pool that we can't leave outside in the winter. Um, it would also have to, it would be at least a week or two, depending on the pool guy's schedule and how quickly we can get everything out of the, and then where do we store it?
Well, and the physical part isn't as much of a concern to me. You know, the physically de-winterizing and getting things out of it, as you would have to have somebody there to monitor it. So you would have to have open hours, because the way that that building works, other than we have, you know, the desk and the chairs and everything that is steerable, um, the pool doesn't, the pool from the inside doesn't lock. We would have to change something. It was, it's a matter of safety. You would have to have somebody there and you would have to have somebody to sanitize the facility. It also, besides the bathrooms, has showers, um, which I'm sure would get used, you know? So you really would need to have a, a monitor there. And that's a matter of hiring somebody and having the budget for that. To me, that's a bigger concern with that pool facility. Laying it, Jessie, he has a question, but I just like this portion of the program. So, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to take that a, a step further and say that hmm, i- if the problem, you know, if, if you choose to leave the trails open and we want to see some immediate relief on the weekends, the pool facility, whether it's with porta-johns or with the actual building, it is a reasonable solution. Uh, but more importantly, I think, is to have a volunteer or a knowledgeable person there on the weekends and require the hikers to check in and tell them where to park. Um, we can open the parking at Joyland. We can direct them to go park there. Um, we can, and we can tell them what our rules are for hiking in Green Mountain Falls. It's, it's really a, a point of contact with the hikers on the weekends when we're having the problems um, is, is probably the best way to communicate, you know, our issues that we're having and the, the causing for the town.
Well, and I think that's still the same related question, is hiring that person or finding that person to do that. And you know how that works is nobody wants to volunteer their whole weekend all the time.
No, but I, I, maybe we could find four volunteers to cover a weekend. You know, or more. I- it could be small shifts of, I mean, we have the trails committee who's done a ton of work. I, um, you know, we just need to get, if you choose to keep, to stay open, let's try to create some immediate relief. Um, we can try it for a few weekends and, and see what happens. Uh, we can see a volunteer for those positions. Maybe the Boy Scouts could, you know, maybe eventually we're charging $10 per car for people to come and hike. And if the Boy Scouts are manning the hiker check-in station, they take half. Th- there are some options, but for some immediate relief to real problems, um, let's get face-to-face with the hikers.
Well, and thank you for recognizing that some of it, there are real problems here and they, they are insurmountable, but we need to think of all of the questions that we can upfront, you know? Let's try to solve what we can as, as well as we can.
And I'd like to say, I love, I love the idea of a kiosk of some sort. Um, you know, because, I mean, that's what we used to have down at the lake forever ago for people to pay to fish at the lake. And having a check-in place, um, regardless of if parking is paid or not, if they need to get a pit parking pass, I really like the idea of having a check-in place. But again, um, I think part of it is, how would we monitor and make sure that everybody goes and checks in? You know, do we, do we put reminders on cars when they're not parked with the little tab we give them or whatever saying that they've checked in? Or, I mean, it's a, it's a lot bigger picture, but I understand that we do need immediate relief too. Um, but yeah, I just, I, I, I really, I'm all for a kiosk of some sort. If that's the pool house or if that's some other thing that we can do to set something up.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Sorry, one option could be to put, put a, you know, a sign out saying, "Hiker checked in this way." One option could be to put, put a, you know, a sign out saying hiker checked in this way, you know? Something that'll catch their eye as they come into town. And then have at the kiosk, you know, until we figure out what the longer term solution is, we can give just a little flyer telling them about dog leash laws, about, you know, not walking in the middle of the road. Just some of the basic, simple things that we've been having trouble with and seeing if that makes any any difference in reducing our problems.
Well, and I would push away from having a fire just because it's one more thing to get thrown down in the road. But I'd like to have a big whiteboard that says dogs on leash, here's the bathrooms, here's the parking, single file in the street. And so forth.
I would like to point out that if there is a kiosk setup, that that's going to take some some planning on our on our part. Especially if there is a charge for hikers to when they check in. There would need to be some some legislation in place. And from a fiscal standpoint, it's not recommended that volunteers collect money. Yeah, so there are some some other budgetary kind of things that I have some concerns about with that. But I do think it's a it's a really good idea to explore.
Well, so so back to reality in law of fiscal management, I think that's probably a really good idea and solution for next year. Because I don't think this is a problem that's going to be resolved because of this year only. So I'd like to see that go on to that group that's going to be talking about parking and signs and whatever, because I think it's such a good and valuable solution. The question before us today to bring this around for full circle is what's happening today? And the question that was before us is to close the trailheads. And I think we are trying to come up with solutions of not closing everything or maybe not closing them. The issue being, I think we've kind of come to a resolution that we'd like to see the porta potties, especially if it's paid with CARES money. And let me know if I'm not summarizing this well. The other problem is the parking, because we are overrun. I mean, we just have an excessive number of hikers. So let's put the porta potties to one side, hoping that we've kind of come to an agreement there. But what do we do to kind of curb some of the the numbers? Because the numbers are a problem, both with parking and general walking traffic. We have, we would have a very hard time trying to shut down the on-street parking just because of the nature of how it's designed. I've seen people take down the the triangles that are put up there to try to keep them from parking in the corner. They just throw them down or park over the top of them. So I don't think that putting up a hazard line all that way would be very useful. But one thing I think would help is if we had signage that pointed hiking, parking at Joyland. Because that would certainly take the congestion out of the main streets, which would also solve a lot of the emergency vehicle question. However, it's a matter of how do you make people do that? Because of course, human nature is is you want to park as close and as convenient as you can. So board, what are your ideas for parking and how to curb the congestion?
Well, is parking legal on Belvedere now?
No. It's not legal on Belvedere now.
But I don't. I don't know how many people are being ticketed for parking on the street where parking is not allowed.
Well, I do know that at Belvedere, that the marshal has been ticketing. I did see a report on the tickets he's written for in the last couple of weeks. But of course, it's like everything else. I mean, we don't have 24/7 parking control.
Right, right. Well, again, I'm wondering about some of the CARES funds for, you know, for a deputy or some kind of additional support. Because, you know, the the weekends is when it's the heaviest and when we have the the least amount of coverage generally. I just think the word would get out and people would start parking legally. Parking illegally was a problem. I don't think it's necessarily a problem for the people that are parking illegally. I don't, you know, I think there's just been a handful of tickets considering how many people are doing it.
And see, I don't know how many people are parking illegally. I just see the huge glut of people right there along the street in front of the church.
So if there are concerns about, you know, COVID and the influx of people with the trails, and we were to shut down trails, even if temporarily, we could hire a a COVID enforcement officer or not, we wouldn't call it that. It would be a first responder. And that could potentially be covered by the CARES funds. But, you know, I mean, we can't hire a parking enforcement officer with COVID funds.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, Angie. You know, the money that's out there for COVID, the government is really, really specific on what you can and what you cannot use the funds for. So I think personally, I would like to see us put this resolution forward to our next meeting. And that gives us time to really look really closely at what the regulations are and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So that we can have a better plan of action.
I'd agree that that we need some time to figure this out. I'm wondering in the meantime, if we shouldn't look into getting the porta johns.
Absolutely.
You know, it's because it sounds like that's kind of that that would qualify for the CARES.
We called about porta johns today and those can actually be placed later this week. We were just waiting for a call back from them about our quote was for two downtown at the lake park and then one, maybe two over near the the pool area by this other park with the with the tennis courts.
I think that's a really good place to start. You know, even if we were to close the trails, I don't know how we would enforce that. It, I mean, I just think there's a lot of.
If they were closed for, if they were closed because of COVID concerns, we could use the CARES funds to hire an officer for enforcement.
Well, with so many trails, I can't imagine how one person could do that, but.
Big job.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I, I know that that's not really necessarily what we want to do. But we have to do something to control the influx.
Is there a way that we can do something electronically? Like right now, when you go to our website, there's really not a whole lot of information about about hiking or any about hiking rules or parking rules. Could we make that more prominent when it gets pulled up on the main Green Mountain Falls website? And could we send that to where people are looking at it, like the hiking trails sites? We can forward that information to them because they are updating them related to trail closures. So if we have trail restrictions and rules, maybe we can catch some people that way.
Yeah, I think that there, the parking restrictions are pretty, there's not a lot of parking restrictions right now, which is another reason that Virgil and I have been working on a draft. We did send over some stuff to the attorney so that he could draft that. And then we could present an initial draft to the parking for that, to the parking and the comprehensive parking and signage plan group. We got that Patrick Family Fund Grant Award. And that would be an initial step in in is presenting with a couple of different options as to what we could do with parking to resolve it. And so all these ideas can go to, could go to that group, that stakeholders group, and then come back to the board. Hopefully very soon. It definitely is a problem that won't be fixed overnight and it will take time. There are a lot of Band-Aids certainly put on it on it. And I think there's a lot of really great ideas to do that, to do the Band-Aid that have been presented here tonight. That's the plan for the long term is the comprehensive signage and parking plan. Putting out an actual ordinance that's more clear, that has more restrictions. And is more enforceable, hopefully.
Well, and I think, I think a lot of this conversation is hugely important to put forth with that committee. I mean, it's not going to be solved this year. This year, we're still having a struggle.
And as part of that, I am hoping to put together a very short survey that would open up to the public. Maybe five to eight questions with with a comment box at the end to really get that feedback from the citizens and hopefully that information can be put together and brought then brought back to that committee as well. As part of that, because people are going to have great ideas and but they can all go back to that committee and we can, you know, weed through it all and try to come up with the best solution that we possibly can for everyone.
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to say that that's the biggest point here. And anybody that's in this meeting listening, you know, pass it on, bring your solutions, bring the solutions. We know we've got problems, but we need help with solutions. And I think we really need to encourage people to speak up. Because again, somebody may have an idea that nobody's thought of before. And we really, really need that guidance moving forward so that we can make an informed decision that benefits everyone. But we don't know if all we do is get beat on the head and told we're lying and hiding and everything else when we're really trying to do the right thing. And I just want to encourage people to please, please, please bring your solutions to us.
In a survey, having all those comments together in a survey written down, the comments with solutions and ideas for solutions. It will highlight problem areas in town that maybe we wouldn't, the committee itself, small group of people might not think of. And it'll also, I mean, there'd be a lot of ideas in there that maybe we wouldn't think of, but that's what a community does, come together and put all the ideas together and come up with something great.
I'd also like to float an idea of some sort of community watch. I mean, I know that Mr. Britton has talked a lot about he's having too many people up on his property. I know other people have talked about them having trespass and so forth. We floated this idea off and on for years about community watch, but part of it really is is just watching out for your neighbors. And if somebody is around a house that that you know they shouldn't be, then if you can't speak up to them, you can at least make a phone call. You know, I think that's an important thing to write down what's going on and have a good idea. Because we have to look out after each other. And I appreciate what Mac was saying is this board does try to do the right thing for the majority of people. And we don't always hear what everyone thinks. And I think having a survey about this situation, which concerns us all, is going to be could be a big thing and an important thing. So so we've come to the decision that we want to try to have porta potties. But I we probably should put a clause on how long we have those. And I would think through September would probably be long enough because by then most people have gone home. We have not come up with much of a parking solution. But do we think HDMFF could help us at least with some signage that says parking, hiker parking this way? And point them towards Joyland and maybe a hiker parking in Joyland. I'm not letting Jesse speak.
Yep. So we have posted signage at Joyland that says hiker parking, hiker parking welcome. That has been established there also behind the Lakeview Terrace. There are 15 places there. And we have put up a sign there that says hiker parking, parking welcome. And I do think that since a press release really got us into this whole situation with people discovering the hiking trails, that maybe we put out a town press release saying that hiking has changed in Green Mountain Falls. And you need to park here. You need to check in as a hiker. We could get out information quickly with a press release.
Jesse, could you draft something to send to Angie?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Okay, board, are we, are we kind of along the same path? And are we okay with moving on from this subject?
I am. I just, I would just like to revisit the entire concept of the ordinance. Possibly in September also, if not, if people don't feel like we need to do it sooner. I don't think this needs to go away, but I think it, I think it needs to be revisited and reviewed to see if there needs to be another revision to our Band-Aid.
I would like to see this resolution come up again at the next meeting. And for everyone who's on there today, just to remind you that this doesn't mean we're trying to do this, to to do this or close all the trails. But what we want to do is make sure that we still have a discussion. We are going to have discussions. And we're going to continue to have discussions to make sure we're doing the right thing for the people who live in this town. I really want to be able to keep this alive, just so if something really goes south or sideways or COVID goes worse, that we aren't reinventing the wheel, that we can actually move on this and move on it quickly if we need to. Because we live in really weird and uncertain times. And I don't want this to just be dead if it's a necessary evil that we need to pursue. All right, we have three people who want to say something. However, this last word goes to the board. I would move that resolution 202014 is continued at the next meeting.
Second?
And all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Were there any nays on that? Saying that, that passes, but I would suggest the people who wanted to comment, please comment during public input and we will just continue to keep this alive and see where we're going as a town and what's best for the town. I M C is the Summer of Good Neighbors Update. And although some of tonight was kind of hard, I think having frank discussions is a big plus and a big part of being good neighbors. And Angie, can you give us an update on I M C?
Sure. Well, I'm going to introduce Victor Matthews III. He's been working here this summer as our, as an admin assistant. And he's been helping a lot with some of the clerk duties. We have had our finance with a third party consistently this year, and it's been really nice. But it's been really nice to have Victor here helping out with some of the clerk duties. And he comes with us, comes to us from a recent grad from CU Colorado Springs in Communications and Leadership. And that really rings through in his work on the Summer of Good Neighbors project. And he's our new shining star. So without further ado, Victor Matthews.
Hello there, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. On June 2, the Board of Trustees declared that this was the Summer of Good Neighbors. And I've had the awesome pleasure to kind of work on that and talk with everybody about it and get stuff for it. Less than four weeks ago, we decided to make a Less than four weeks ago, we decided to make a Facebook page for it. Where we've been inviting people to share their stories or give us pictures so that we can post and it has a few posts on it already. In just about three weeks, we've had over 150 people be engaged in some way. Which is really cool and that was actually numbers from yesterday. So it's going up every day and it's kind of compounding. So more and more people are getting to see it. Over 70, over 70 of those people liked it and are following it now. There's a lot of really cool stories that are on there and I just recommend everybody to go check it out, tell your friends, tell your family, if you have any good ideas or stories or anything. I think this is a really great idea to really just do what we can to stay happy and stay positive and show everybody that we're doing things to engage with our neighbors, to engage with our community. To stay uplifted, especially during these wild times. It's already been getting some questions too. People ask questions about what's open and what's some cool stuff that they can do in town. And a quick shout out to Jesse who is here from Green Box and also to Misty who's the Still You Pass Project. They've been huge in helping as well with giving pictures and stories and things like that too. There's a lot of stuff that's happening that's not even accounted for. Just because there's so much awesome stuff going on, but luckily we are being able to capture some of it and pull it all together. And it's a really cool way just to see people engage with all their positivity. Site and the page are only going to grow more and more, which is really cool. And I think this is a really cool way for loving kindness to just spread to everyone and everything and all of us. So that's my quick little update.
Victor, I appreciate it and I really appreciate that you just grabbed this idea and ran with it. I think, and I've said this before, I think it's so easy to grab onto the negative and just hold on to it because the media waves that around a lot and sometimes social media does and I just really appreciate your work in making this as, as good and positive and, and interesting and I'm glad you're here, Victor.
So, and Victor, what's the Facebook page called?
It's called Summer of Good Neighbors. Yeah, it's just as simple as that. I could pull it up on the screen, but it's just called The Summer of Good Neighbors. SGN is our little tag or GMFSGN is the little tag on it. It's on Facebook, but I'm actually talking with the Still You Pass Project also there. We were talking about posting something on Instagram too, to just continue to spread the word as best we can, so.
Okay.
All right, cool. Cool, thank you. Item D is the DOLA Flood Recovery Projects, Water on Mars, GMF Contract and Andrei Brocken, the Engineer, Project Management Contract. Angie, give us a little rundown on that, please.
All right, this will be a quick rundown. There was a DOLA grant awarded to the town. Four projects were identified for flood recovery. And two of those projects were deemed health and safety critical. Maple and Midland Street were identified as those priorities. Water on Mars bid came in at 119,000. We have about 106,000 left in the budget. To have the project managed by the engineer, which is necessary, is $3,600. So it brings the project total to $123,500, or $123,055. The gap in the, the budget there could be taken care of by, partially by the municipal pool closure this year. And then also we saved a considerable amount of money in our road maintenance budget. Based on staff is using a mag chloride additive. Instead of having a third party administer it. So it saved us a considerable amount of money this year. That's it.
All right. Board, we've discussed these projects several times. We know those two projects are critical. Angie has come up with where the money's going to come from to meet that gap. Do you have any further questions for her?
When will it be, when will the projects proceed? Well, if you, if y'all approve the, the contracts, the contracts this evening, then we'll be in touch with the contractor, we would execute the contract and then it would go back to the contractor and we'd schedule it as soon as they can possibly get in. I'd love to start it Monday, but once the contract's executed, they do have a certain amount of time and I think it's nine weeks, which is the construction period and it has to be completed within that time period so that the clock starts ticking pretty quickly.
Good. I would move that we approve the contracts as submitted.
Well, second?
Ready for a discussion? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Public input, we still have people here and they want to say things, so let's do it. And remember this is we can't really jump in on your three minutes, but if we can direct staff or if we can put it towards staff, we will do so.
So, let's see, I've got three people written down, four people written down for public input. The first one was Judy Pazaza. I never say that name right, but apologize ahead of time. You will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, hi, it's Piazza, the Italian Piazza. 11160 Belvedere. And just a couple of things. I'm very glad to be here this evening and I would love to suggest that minutes get up posted earlier, like even, I, I'm not sure the legality, but even if they're not approved yet, so that we can see what's happened in particular meetings. So that would be one suggestion. Another is that Jane, you had this great idea a couple of years ago. I know it came up at the mayor's forum just the other day again. About an email communication out to the town residents. And you know, I just, I take total responsibility for not checking in on the website for updates and for what's going on enough, often enough. But if there can be some kind of like, maybe it's the Summer of Good Neighbors that we, we do an email communication with particular things that affect the residents of the town, whether they're summer or all year round. And like some of these decisions that, and, and public discussions that are going to be called for as we look ahead to parking and trails and all of that. So, and I'd be very willing to help with that. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that. One other comment I'll make is as Mr. Britton, I can't remember your first name, was mentioning on Belvedere, the traffic really has increased and it's not about like for me noticing more parking on Belvedere, but many people going up and down the road just to see where the trailhead is and this kind of thing. And I'm wondering whether a sign at the base of, of particular roads that say residential and delivery traffic only might help mitigate some of the traffic that's just going up and down. So again, thank you and I'll pass now.
All right, thank you.
Next on our list, I've got Mac Patrol and you will need to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, in response to some of the comments about the porta potties in the bathrooms. Someone has to pay for the manpower, woman power for the maintenance of any of them. The pool building has an antiquated septic system, possibly 100 years old. The pressure that would be put on that building to be used as a, as a, as a public bathroom would be devastating. So I believe that that is, that one is just totally out of the question. Unless you have $30,000, $40,000 for a new septic system, because that's about what they cost these days. So I, I, I guess my, my question is, does the town have the budget? Somebody has to pay for whether you have porta potties or whatever, somebody has to pay. And I don't think the town has the budget. Unless you do, wave your hand and I'll shut up, but I don't think you have that kind of money. So it should be user pay. Short timer answer might be porta potties, but I don't know, have they have they canceled broad days or is that still going on in two weeks? Can you imagine the parking conflict on, on Saturday of broad days? So you know, these are things that have to be considered before they happen. And my guess is that you're going to need a, a, a larger police force to take care of the parking problem and parking conflicts that are going to arise from people wanting to come to see the parade that they've seen for the last 55 or 60 years and, and somebody who wants to take a hike. So you know, that is a, that is a, a problem. Again, I thank the board for the work that they're doing, but you, you talked about having a little money left in your budget this year. You need to spend a lot of it on the roads. You really do. I talked with some people today who, who have hired a lawyer. And I believe that they've sent you some pictures or their lawyer has sent you some pictures of some of the things that go on in their street and, and they're not, they're not, they're serious. So that's something that, that, another thing besides parking and porta potties, the people who use the roads to, to access the trails are, are either not very smart or I, I just don't, I just don't, they're not very safe, that's for sure. And, and the town is, is likely to end up sued if some kid gets run over by a car, somebody coming out of a side street going, driving down Hondo, trying to get to the grocery store or the post office. So something needs to be done about that, that pedestrian traffic everywhere in Green Mountain Falls. Once you, once you get away from that, the, the, the part of the street that's marked for pedestrians, it's every man for himself. There, so something needs to be done about that and soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's two more people on my public input list. Next I have Jesse Stroop. And you will need to unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I wrote out a statement and, and, and before the meeting, but I, I want to discuss the Year of the Good Neighbor Program because I love it. I, I think it's something that I hope we can take it on for a long time. It makes sense in a forward-thinking community, a community with significant investments in a new district fire department, renovations of historical buildings throughout the town, an arts festival, an extensive tra- trail system, a picturesque lake with a gazebo. These are all enviable to most communities. And really a gift from our town founders who built the town as a tourist destination. To, to adopt a good neighbor program, we have to be good neighbors ourselves and lead by example. And there has been some poor behavior among some of the community leaders in the past few weeks that seem to be in conflict with what we're trying to do. And I'm not talking about the Board of Trustees, although I'm not going to name others out. We need to get back to a level of civility to everyone working underneath the Board of Trustees. We need to show gratitude and encouragement to all the members of the community that volunteer their time to make it better. The town government has to be a good neighbor and provide better customer service to the residents. Operational restrooms, drivable roads and public safety and law enforcement should be the cornerstone services provided to the town and to the visitors. And sometimes they fall to the bottom of the list because they're just hard to solve. The town restrooms really haven't been operational for any length of time in the last several years, which is disappointing. There are handwritten signs all over town that are not allowable by code and they make our community sound unfriendly to visitors. And it looks trashy and this, this should change. And that's why there was some grant money awarded for that. We need to demand more of our leaders at town hall, but we have to give more of our personal time towards helping with these ongoing issues. Citizens need to volunteer to serve on committees, work groups and community think tanks. We need to demand that our parks are mowed, that our fountains restored, that the lights on the gazebo are on. To simply walk through and notice the condition of our town and, and look to where we can make improvements and ask for improvements. Small things add up really quickly to make us all look better. And we sort of find ourselves in this COVID emergency where we're not propelled, prepared to deal with it because our resources are overtaxed. Not prepared, not good neighbors to each other, our visitors or our children. And we really have to protect these lazy summer days and quiet snowy winter afternoons. We're not guaranteed those because of our proximity to the lake, but really by the effort that we put in the community. Margaret and Catherine, I mean, we talk about crossover. You guys serve on Broad Day, Sally Bush, Board of Trustees, Chamber of Commerce. And I don't know how a lot of those things would survive without you. So you know, kudos to you, but other people really have to step up. And, and I'm willing to do that. I'm looking forward to working with Clay and coming up with some solutions for parking signage and and trail ordinances. And I hope that other people fill out the volunteer application and submit it. Whenever.
All right, thank you.
Next is Jade, Jane Friedman online. Let's see, you will need to unmute yourself. Jane Friedman, you would need to unmute yourself if you're there under another name. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on. That's all that I have in my list. I believe Rocco Blazi did ask to be recognized on the, on the chat to the host and that would be our, our last person.
All right.
And you will need to unmute yourself.
Yep, okay. Hopefully you can hear me. Rocco Blazi, 10955 Belvedere Avenue. So trustees, I listened into the discussion about the COVID and the restrooms and everything. I think that was a productive discussion. The thing that I think is being overlooked and I'd like you to consider adding to your agenda for, for next time is look at how we're going to go forward and implement the details in the comprehensive plan. Kind of come up out of the weeds a little bit. There was mention of a survey, conducting a survey. This $100,000 comprehensive plan went through extensive community input. And I think it's a valuable source document that may guide to some solutions that have already been paid for and considered in this $100,000 document. And I know it's tough because we're kind of reacting to, you know, all the, the virus stuff and the parking and I think what used to be considered little things have become amplified as our individual worlds have kind of shrunk and we don't get out as much. But I, there's good people on here. I think everybody's a decent person and we can agree to disagree on the trails. When I see you on the street, I'm going to say, hi neighbor, this is the Summer of Good Neighbor and that's what it's all about. But I think it would be a valuable discussion to get out of the weeds, hopefully next month and figure out how go forward, we can implement some of those big ideas and the visions that were all captured last year and the year before with extensive community development and questionnaires and input. And that's a valuable plan. If you want the planning committee put on that, please ask us and we'll put that on our agenda. The planning commission is ready to help implement these things. And I think there's a lot of good suggestions and it's, it's a valuable document and I think it'll help bring discussion out of the weeds level every once in a while and take a bigger look at the vision for the next 10 years. Thanks for what you do.
All right, thank you.
And that's all we've got for, for public input requests.
Okay. The next item is correspondence. Board, you have received many, many letters today that I hope you read in, in conjunction with the public discussion. The next item is reports. The only report I have is I was allowed to have a mayor's forum. as part of Green Box. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and try to represent the town as best I can. I appreciate all your support in that. Danny, do you have any reports?
Just that, you know, with, with everything that's been going on with COVID, it sounds like there are some opportunities for grant funding related to COVID. And so we've been trying to work on coming up with ideas. I know that long-term solutions for the bathroom situation and just general maintenance and safety for improving our town are things that we need to look towards. And so if you all find any opportunities for grants, if there are ideas that you'd like to see us try and move forward, I think hearing those positive things can really make a difference and we can try and move on those if they're, if they're feasible at all.
Thank you. I think that's always a good reminder that we accept help, we accept grants. The best thing about open and public meetings is the open and public discussions that we get to have. I think a lot comes from that. So thank you. Catherine, do you have a report?
Well, I just want to say that, speaking of grants, we're looking into possibly using some of the Cares Grant through the Chamber of Commerce to help some of our local businesses who've been impacted by, by the COVID pandemic. And this is not a report, but I just want to say, what a beautiful Fourth of July celebration at the lake. It was, it was just great. It was great to see all the people around the lake. It looked like people were, were being really good about masking and keeping social distancing. And yet it was a really wonderful celebration. So thank you, Jesse, for, for those efforts and yeah, hope to, hope to do that again.
I agree. That was, that was a good time. That was a good thing for our town. Margaret, do you have a report and especially an update on Branca?
You know what? Yeah, that's what I was going to talk about. At this point for Branca, we are very cautiously moving forward. We are looking at all of the El Paso County and the CDC guidelines regarding social distancing and, and all other things, limited contact. Branca this year, I'm sure people are going to be disappointed because it's not going to be a big, huge parade. It's not going to be the same Branca that we've had in years past. We are scaling it down tremendously this year. We are not going to have any vehicles, no judging, nothing like that for the parade. It's going to be a very small walking parade that's going to go from just in front of like where the Mucky Duck is and down the parking area through, through Lake Street, around the lake and back. We're encouraging kids, pets, things like that. And, and the parade is even going to be socially distanced. We're going to have a little bit of entertainment. We have talked to the local restaurants. They're going to be offering a specific to-go menu so that people can help support the local restaurants, get some lunch, be in the park to listen to the entertainment that we have. We'll have some limited games. We have very limited vendors. Everything is going to be distanced. So we're moving forward. Like I said, cautiously, but it's, you know, mainly community involvement, people getting together, but really encouraging everyone to distance and wear masks and just be safe. If you feel like you, you aren't well or if you don't feel safe, please don't come. But we just, we want to be safe and we still want to keep our tradition going. So that's it.
Alright.
Thank you for the, for the pyrotechnics display. It wasn't fireworks, it was pyrotechnics. And I'd like to say, my daughter was so pleased, her and my grandson came up. And this is the first time he was able to experience fireworks in Green Mountain Falls. And for her, it was, for me, it was nostalgia, for her, it was nostalgia because she just was so pleased to be able to experience something that she grew up with again. So thank you to Green Box because that was a wonderful gift to the town.
That was, that was, that was really good. I really appreciate that. I really appreciate Green Box this year, all the way around, like always. And for me personally, I really enjoy the inflatable sculptures too. There is something about the whimsy of those that I just really appreciate. Angie, do you have any further reports?
Just real quick, also thank you to Jesse and Green Box, the inflatable sculptures, really nice touch. At first I thought they were bouncy houses and I was really excited. The fountain materials came in the mail today and hopefully the fountain will be going back up later this week. Road maintenance, first priority. So pending that, we'll get the Porta Johns in later this week down at the lake and down at, at the, you know, the tennis court park area. And I'm wondering if the board will be amenable to a second meeting on July 21st, specifically just for the Cares Budget Discussion. And I'll have a couple scenarios that have been reviewed by the county Cares Budget Specialist who's gone through the 1,000-page legislation. And so we'll be good to go.
Let's please do have that meeting and then we can revisit what's going well and what's going bad and, and move from there. Jesse, do you have a comment?
I do. I just, I'll pass on all the thank yous for Green Box. And I really want to say that, that the Marshall and Angie were really helpful in making all that happen and I appreciate their support as well as the Board of Trustees.
Alright, thank you. Is Virgil on? Do you have any, any further report?
Yeah, there I am. I have nothing further to report, actually. Am I actually being heard?
Yes, you're being heard.
Okay. I want to encourage Margaret to get with Jesse because the safety plan that he wrote for the Fourth of July celebration was phenomenal. He covered everything that El Paso County asked for. And for Branca, I think it would be very, very beneficial just to touch base with him because he did, he did an amazing job. As far as the Fourth of July celebration went, we experienced absolutely no problems. Everything went off like clockwork, which is in 40 years, something that I've never been able to say. And beyond that, I think I'm good. It's been a busy month, as you can see by the report. We're, we're working on a number of different things. I'm trying to do it all and I hope I get it done.
Well, we have every confidence in you and we're very grateful for your work as we're grateful and thankful for all of our staff work and all of our volunteer work. In between many other things I'm doing, I'm repairing toys. See this poor bear, missing an ear and missing an eye. I feel a little bit like this bear after this meeting. But hopefully by the next meeting, he'll be all repaired and we'll be ready to go again. Board, let Angie know if there's a reason that you can't meet on that second meeting. But for me, I think we should go ahead and do it. But check your calendars and circle around. We'll see some invitation on that. If there is nothing further, let's adjourn this meeting. Good Lord, it's 11:00 after 10 o'clock. Let's call it done.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright.